Okay, anybody have any announcements that we need? None that I'm aware of, okay. Jeri Ann Smart. Are you taking a picture of me?
No, we're social media.
Oh, good. You're up.
Okay, hello.
We're talking about the relocation of the Marquisus.
Oh, my gosh, you guys have a marquee. Okay. So, how do you spell marquee? That is the question.
Marquee.
I see that. Okay. Hello. Can I just give you an update on where we are in the Opera House? Just in general?
Yep.
Can I sit?
Sure.
Would that be okay? You guys? So, it's been awhile since I've annoyed you all, so thank you for letting me come in tonight. We have, this past, this October, we've been spending a lot of time on organizational infrastructure. Committee, setting up committees, working on what we're gonna do for our retreat, which is in November on the 9th. And that's gonna be really great. We're gonna take, spend a whole day and just figure some really important things out. We have Hungry Heart, a Vermont film, here at the Opera House on the 15th of November. It's a documentary about addiction with an incredible community forum discussion afterwards with some incredible people. And then we're really happy, you probably already know this, that the Opera House is a location for the Virginian High School Fall Musical. And we're really happy to step up and offer that space. And it's, it's gonna be incredible, review of music from Broadway. On November 30th, we have country singer Jamie Lee Thurston with his special guest father, Jimmy T. He's also a country legend. And Jamie has agreed to do this as a fundraiser for the Opera House. He's, he's paying us to rent the space, giving us $2 on every ticket. We worked something out with Ian at the Antidote to get a percentage of the bar. I mean, it's just this incredible night that's gonna be really quite stunning Thanksgiving weekend, so looking forward to that. Broadway Direct is on the 6th of December. We just confirmed with Sue O'Daniel, we're doing something really special because of this review that they're having at the Opera House. She's gonna be putting forth some incredibly stellar students to be part of that review. So, these kids are gonna be able to sing with some Broadway professionals on the Opera House stage. That's the mission, the education part that we're really, really excited about, for the Opera House being reopened and vibrant. Then we have the Holiday Stroll the very next day. That's gonna be fun, Santa Claus, Santa's wife, Mrs. Claus, storytelling. And then Big Joe's Big Band Christmas Ball on the 21st. So, then we have Christmas, and we relax. And then the New Year starts. Okay, so that's all exciting stuff. And just because you don't wanna sit around and do nothing, we look at other things to do and get involved in. What you got in your packet was a schematic, a small version of this, which shows the City Hall and this proposed courtyard idea. And the courtyard idea came out because the marquee was deteriorating in the base and a few other places. And we were poached to get some work on it and restore it. So, in the process of looking for grants and underwriters, we went to Green Mountain Power. And I'm happy to say they awarded us $10,000 through the $12,500 expense to restore this entire marquee, which is fantastic. It's gonna be raised up a little bit, a stronger base, a steel base put on the bottom of it. All the, all the markers that are on it existing will be spiffed up, it's gonna have a new finish on it, that's gonna be weather resistant. And the clock's gonna work, so David right here in town, David Welch, is gonna work on the clock. John Baker's gonna work on all the metalwork, and he's kind of the overseer of this project for us. The light will work as well. So, part of that proposal was putting forth a bigger idea. We fixed this, but it's really part of the plan to really have it come back to a stronger, better position in front of the Opera House. And we layered on top of that the fact that the police is leaving, their office, the office is leaving into their new space. And we started to think, well, what, what could we do that's even, what could put a bow on this whole City Hall? You know, with the marquee coming back and the traffic in terms of the downstairs is for city people's uses going into the city offices, the police station isn't there anymore. So, what would be, we just started this brainstorming idea of a larger, broader discussion, along with the discussion of what would happen with the ticket booth area and what is currently now the chief's office. So, what you see in front of you are concept, of course, so right here, this bold out, you all have that? You all have it? This bold out is really what goes into the existing parking area. So, we are saying no parking in front of City Hall. That basically is what it's saying. City Hall has a courtyard now, you drive down 22A, it's heading south, you'll see the marquee for the out towards the road. So, it's lit, the clock is, is working, and people already get a sense of calming down the traffic, slowing down their coming into a very important streetscape. This is the main building of the downtown, this is City Hall, it does all of that. It also creates this larger area for spillover for folks who come out of events, whether it be for weddings or Opera House events upstairs that are shows, et cetera. And it creates a nice safety buffer between them and traffic. And obviously, it creates a really nice place for the marquee to be returned that's further out so people can see it. Okay, so we just started thinking about how, how would this start to look, what would it mean? So, we as the Friends, obviously, we're gonna have this marquee come back sometime, it's gonna go away probably January 1st, right after January 1st. It's gonna go for the winter to John Baker's shop, and he's gonna work on it. We'd like it to come back around March and land in its new place, in a new home, with a new footer that's a little bit higher and granite pavers and plantings around it to protect it from salt and other erosion, which is what started to eat away at the base initially. And we'd like it to return into the special spot that's further out so people could see it. And we'd like to return to a courtyard that's open and has the look and feel of all the other bold outs and improvements on the C Street that have happened over the past 15, 20 years. So, it matches, pretty matches what is already existing, except it's not in front of stores, it's not in front of homes, it's in front of our own City Hall. And it looks really, really, really great. And the bricks here are matched or picked to match the bricks that are in the building, on top of the building, from the building, the veneer. So, it goes with it, so it looks like it should be there. What we wanna do on top of that, obviously, we're not in the, in the business of doing bold outs and things like that, that's in the area of expertise of the city and Mel, but we wanna sell names on these bricks, not unlike what they did in Town Hall Theater in Middlebury. And that money that we sell will pay at least for the materials, okay? And extra monies that go to the Friends of the Virginians Opera House to keep us vibrant and is part of our strategic plan for sustainability. Because we do need to have, we need to look at everything we can to be sustainable. So, this is a way that we could do that. So, conceptually, this is what we're looking at. This is not graded or anything, this is just an idea. So, that's, that's basically it for now. I'll entertain any questions, ideas.
So, you're here to float that idea, to, to see what initial reactions are. I know that probably if anything were to happen, it's gotta go through zoning board or whatever, non-necessarily, or...
The DRB wouldn't take jurisdiction over this because it's, it's all, this is all within the city, within the city right of way, so they wouldn't take jurisdiction.
Okay. And at this point, there's no, other than the brick selling, there's, we haven't discussed any funding, that's something that has to be dealt with in the future.
That would be the next phase. So, suppose you say, this is a great idea, we need a courtyard in front of City Hall. Jeri Ann, let's figure this out. You work with Mel, and we figure it out.
Yeah.
I would start in January selling the bricks, because the longer I have to sell the bricks, the quicker I can pay for all the materials that go inside that space.
Okay.
And so, it'll be happening in earnest. So, and, you know, there's a lot I know that has to come together, but unless we have the concept approved, you know, we really can't go for it.
Okay. Let's, let's just go around the table so everybody has a chance to, this is obviously new to some people or, you know, whatever, but if you have any comments or any questions, Lynn, you wanna start?
Well, I love the idea. I think that's one of the issues when you come out of the Opera House, is you're immediately on the sidewalk in the curb. And you cannot see the marquee because of the two big trees, which are beautiful. I talked to Jeri Ann about the parking space that we'll lose. She thought it would only be one with a handicap parking right next to it that could be used for both the church and the...
Actually, that's gonna clarify, so the parking, one concept is we lose two able-bodied parking spaces and retain the handicap, but it goes in front of the alleyway entrance, driveway. The other concept is to, we lose only one able-bodied spot and we move able-bodied spot or handicap parking here into the alleyway and here as well. One of them, the able-bodied one, would have a 15-minute limit or whatever, which is so people can pay their taxes, do what they gotta do, scoot out, whatever. So, it's really convenience parking. What this also does is it allows closer access and more grade access to the two handicap access places that these buildings on this alley have, which is the Episcopal's right here and the city downstairs is right here. It's actually harder to, if you, you need existence to get to these two places with the existing handicap access in front of City Hall. So, this allows for more, closer to grade exit and entrance into your car, and it's off-street, so you're not getting out of the car and being in front of traffic or anything like that. So, that's, this is what I'm kinda aiming for, so we do lose one spot, not gonna get around that. But we gain two safer spots, and certainly one that's better for handicap accessibility for the two buildings that are in the alleyway.
Okay. Joe, get the question?
Yeah, well, my, my main concern is the parking, so I'd like to see a better, first of all, I should say, first of all, put my name down for a brick.
Do I tell you how much they cost yet?
No, why don't you just...
Let me figure that out.
I'll take a break.
Help depend on what the costs are for this.
I, you know, I, I worry about the parking, you know, I think that it, the fewer people we have to have cross Main Street, the better. But I just wanna pass, I was gonna email this to Mel, but I just wanted to show this little picture, I don't know how easy it is to see, but I wanted everybody to take a look at the, go to, turn left at the four corners in Shelburne between the railroad tracks and the school, or one of those push-button flashers, it's a solar-powered push-button flasher, so the pedestrians have a chance, you know, something like that at that intersection where people have a crosswalk, they just basically push the button, these lights come on that flash and people can...
Okay, I have it for Arlington, right.
Yeah.
Well, this is something that Shannon talked about, and they're gonna be looking at a lot of those pedestrian safety issues.
And it would be nice to have like dedicated parking spots for City Hall across, you know, across the street or something, if we can't, if we lose some parking spots.
So, you've got a concern on the parking or in the safety issue, but...
Concerned, just more, you know, I, I, that was my first reaction, I just wouldn't mind seeing there, you know, how things work. I don't know if it's an emergency lane or a fire lane there along the side, if that would, I don't know.
It's actually not. It is an access road to get to mechanics back here.
Ziggy, what do you think?
Well, being on city council for a lot of years now, I guess, one main concern, a lot of people I've heard complaints on is why did the police have to park in front of the building? There's people, the elderly people, it, it's a long ways for them to walk, they say, why do they have to, why do they have to park there? You know, the citizens of Virginians would like to maybe be able to utilize it, especially the older people. I've heard that many times. So, my concern would be that parking in front there for the elderly people who has to walk, they say, when they're all backed up there.
Randy, how about you?
I like the concept. Again, I have an issue with park, losing the parking spots, but there is a solution for that. I mean, if we took in May from the hours of eight in the morning to five in the evening or four in the evening, three or four spots, there were only 15-minute parking down towards the Episcopal Church for, for our residents during the day and in any off-hours, it'd be just normal parking spaces. I could see that work. I think having the marquee further out would be nicer.
Okay. I'll go last. Lowell?
I agree, I, I think it's a great idea. Parking-wise, yeah, it's not used much now, except for police vehicles anyway. I, I really don't see losing those two spots as any big deal. My only concern is if you use that alley as a back, as a parking lot backing up out of there, it's gonna be really tough to see, so I would kinda discourage parking up there. I kinda like his idea of a 15-minute parking there down to the corner, probably would be a better suitable alternative.
Randy, how about you?
Well, I think it's a good idea. Initially, I had some concerns about the parking also, not, not per se losing the parking as much as at least having a way for people to drop off people, because if this design is the way I think it is, if you stopped to drop off somebody, you'd be in, in the traffic lane.
You'd rear-end it.
So, you couldn't do that. So, if we can find some way of juggling around where the parking spaces are or that cars can just come in and let off people on occasion, aside from the parking part, although what you've suggested sounds good, and what Randy just said, I think sounds good as far as dealing with the parking. I think the plaza is a, a good idea. I also have a suggestion, because I was looking at this and talking with Joan about it, but is that the two trees in front of City Hall are actually too big for the place. And I'm not suggesting that we cut them down, but it's a little bit more expensive, but you can have them come in and spade them out, take them out, and replant them. And particularly since in the park, we've cut down, I don't know, three trees in the last few years, maybe they can go right into the park. In other places that I've worked, we've done that, we've moved city trees. When they've grown too big, we move them and put them someplace else. And I think that if you took down the trees and just put low growth in there, then you've expanded the visibility of all of City Hall and the marquee also. So, that's one thing I would suggest. And while I've got the floor, I'll just make a comment about the interior. I think that the Opera House should get its ticket booth back and should get the chief's, current chief's office as an office. And I think it would be good for the city if the other space, that was the police department main room, is converted into a council chamber slash meeting room, which I understand from Joan many, many years ago when the police department was even smaller, it was that. And, and because for most of our meetings, it's more than adequate space. For many years, what is now Mel's office was really the, the council meeting room. Actually, it was until I came on as manager, and I changed it and went up to the Opera House to meet, but, and that's a same-sized space, so it could be used for that purpose.
I assume that we were gonna go back there. That's what I thought we were gonna be doing.
We can't go back to Mel's office because his desk and his table has too much stuff on it.
Well, we don't have to.
I think it's a good idea. I mean, I think it would really, really class up everything to have a plaza like that.
Okay. I mean, I, I like the concept. I, I have a little concern about the parking. I think if there's a way to really look at that handicap parking, and Mel and I talked about, you know, lines in the road and so on, so that, and other parking, so that the cars have to kinda do a bit of a, of an outside turn there. My feeling is, I'd like to thank Green Mountain Power first for, for supporting the Opera House and the marquee, which, you know, we, we can use as well. I think that's a fabulous gift to the city of Virginians. I, I think that there's two things I'd like, is a more thought-out process to, to deal with the parking, and also to get some, at least some preliminary numbers in terms of costs. Because, you know, obviously, the city's gonna have to contribute something, and it really depends on how much that's gonna be. Maybe there's a gold-plated version or a silver-plated version, and we need to figure out how we're gonna pay for it. But I, it sounds to me as if the consensus is that there's a majority that would at least take it to the next step. I don't think we need a, a motion, but I think that probably, you know, there's permission to keep moving in that direction. And we'll talk about the next step in terms of when you need to come back here, either with, either with a revised plan, or if we're to the point where we need to start talking about finances and that sort of thing.
Thank you, I think that's a great idea. So, you, you agree in concept, this is, it sounds like you guys agree in the concept. I need a little more detail on here, and I would encourage, you already started to come up with some solutions, which I think is fantastic example of how we all work together, pretty great right now. So, if you keep thinking of solutions as you mull this around and think more about what I said tonight for some of the concerns you have, send them to me.
Who are you working with? You've been Norm, is he helping you with this?
Yes, this is old Norm Lebeth, did all these drawings.
Okay. I mean, I'm wondering if Norm might talk to, to Mel, to Shannon Haggott, some people that are working on that, to see, you know, if there are some ways to deal with this, at least conceptually.
And at the same time, it would be nice to add some lighting. It's very dark when you come out. And if the trees are going to be moved, if that's a thought, there could be additional lighting put in there, because it is dark out there when you, in the, you know? There's no, there's no real light there.
It'd be nice when the clock works and that light is on and the marquee lights, it'd still be...
Well, you could have lights on the building, either shining at the building or on the building, shining out, like the library has, yeah, yeah.
Well, taking this whole concept and going further with it, I think it will encourage us all to look at the entire front of the Opera House and the paint, and, you know, there's different things that need to be fixed up and spiffed up and steps, and this is a good time, it seems like it's a good time.
Good. Anybody else have any questions? Mel?
This is what I, this looks like.
Yeah, one, one of the things, just a few things really, one is the driveway between, you know, the driveway that exists between City Hall and St. Paul's, there was a quit claim deed, and there's an agreement as it relates to that driveway. And so, one of the things relative to any of this parking, whether or not it's here or there, there needs to be some kind of meeting with, with the, with the church, you know, because we, you know, we, we really shouldn't be putting a parking space in front of their driveway, so there needs to be, there certainly needs to be some communication there. The other thing is, is, you know, the, the marquee is a sign. And to me, I'm gonna put my zoning administrator's hat on, and signs, this would be, this would constitute an off-premise sign. If this was, and again, I wouldn't, if the city council felt that this is an exception and there's some reasons, whatever, obviously, you know, if the city council grants an, grants an exception, so be it. But I just wanna let you know that we do not typically allow signs within the city right-of-way, because it's considered an off-premise sign. But more importantly, the reason is because of the potential obstruction of vision. And so, you have a driveway coming down here, and these folks that live up in this area and use this driveway need to have clear, need to have clear visibility. And so, you know, I, I don't know what the side view on this thing is, but right now, there is no obstruction of, they currently have an obstruction of vision, they have, they have three cruisers out in front, okay? But again, I just, I just wanna let you know that that is, vision is, is a concern. The other thing that, in, in my looking at it, and again, Norman hasn't done any grades or anything, but I can tell you, if there's one complaint that we get a lot, it's in front of the post office. And because we have, a curb is supposed to not exceed seven and a half inches, and there's a curb down there that's about 14 inches. And we've actually had, we had somebody who was blind fall off from that curb because they assumed, you know, that, that it wasn't that far down. So, one of the things, when I look at it, you know, I see, you know, man, if this thing is going flat out, you end up with a very high reveal. And so, there's, you know, and obviously, even though, even though it may, I don't, I think that if it's to be designed, it needs to be seven and a half inches so that it is, you know, not a surprise to anyone. And so, therefore, paper's always nice and flat, but not here, it's flat, okay, that's what it is. Well, when you get out there, that's not where the elevations are, it's really here. And I don't know what that does to, to this project, but anyway, it needs to, it needs to have, you know, it needs to have grades. The other thing, you're, you're, you're listening to the guy that shovels this.
I was gonna say, it's not a problem.
So, I'm the one that, I'm the one that does it, the police do help. I doubt that the police will help when they move out, so I am the first in shoveling.
All right, I'll come help you, until we both retire.
And as I mentioned to Jeri Ann, you know, I mean, I actually, I enjoy shoveling, all right? When it's easy, all right? And, and I, and I can, you know, shoveling concrete, nice smooth concrete is easy, all right? Shoveling bricks, you know, if they're absolutely dead-on, compacted, flush, whatever, it's good, but if they aren't, I, I feel, I know my teeth are gonna rattle when I, when I, when I hit something, so, but I know there's brick all over the country, all right? And it's just critical that if we're gonna put brick out there, I mean, we're talking about top-shelf quality type brick, flawless work out there.
And I did, I did call, I agree, I can almost feel that, I've done that. It's very upsetting. So, I called the, the company. One of the great things about the company that does this particular brick, they have a really amazing depth of information that they give you. They take care of you right from the beginning to the end, they just give you stuff. So, I called her, I said, "It's no removal, go. I'm in Vermont, you're in Florida, you know, it's different." So, she said, "It's no problem." She said, "You have to have a rubber tipped, not metal, but a rubber tipped shovel, and it's not a problem." She says, "Everyone uses it." Now, if someone puts the bricks in badly, obviously, that's a problem. But that means a substrate, whatever the sub-material is, and that grading is the most important part for drainage and for level and all that other kinda stuff. So, she said, "It's really about who you get to do it and make sure that they do it right." There's examples in the...
That's part of the cost.
Yeah, I, I mean, I just wanna, listen, I'm not complaining about shovel, I don't mind it, but I can tell you, in a snowstorm, I will shovel 10 times. And Joan, I will shovel 10 times to make sure...
Can we pay someone else that doesn't get your wage to shovel?
No, I won't shovel.
I'm just starting to be the city manager, I did the same thing.
Did you?
We love to see our guys out working.
I don't mind, I don't mind it, you know, but it really, it has to be easy, quick.
I put that...
Point taken.
How does it affect the, excuse me, the people that are plowing?
Well, I did, I did put this in Jim Laro's mailbox on Friday. I wasn't here, I wasn't in the office during the day on Monday. Jim asked Joan, "What's this?" Joan hadn't looked at her agenda packet yet, all right? So, I do not have any comments from Jim yet.
We have plenty of time for his comments, I'm sure.
It's coming. Can't be any worse than the bull belt stuff, either smaller.
Yeah, okay, well, we all set? Jeri Ann, thank you. We'll, we'll be in touch, okay?
We have some shows soon. Right, the Opera House, everybody coming out?
Yep. Um, let's move on to number four, citizens' comments. We have a guest here, and this shouldn't take that long, I don't think. We have Bill Brim from the Turning Point Center, who is just here to briefly tell us about the event at the Opera House that Jeri Ann just mentioned, and would like the city of Virginians just to present a proclamation that Virginians as a, as a city is supporting the Turning Point Center and what they're doing about drugs and so on.
So, the mayor said, Council members, I appreciate the time. I'm with the, I'm the director of the Turning Point Center in Addison County. We are located in Marble Works, and we work with people in recovery, addiction, alcohol, drugs, and I don't need to tell you exactly what's going on in communities around here, drug issues and stuff like that, so. But one of the, one of the ways that we're gonna, trying to get the word out that we do need help here in the communities and get doctor, to get doctors to start prescribing is one of the main issues. Currently, we do not have any doctors in Addison County that prescribe Suboxone, Suboxone or methadone or anything, any kind of treatment to help people that are addicted to heroin or pain medicine. They have to go to Birmingham or Redland, or New York, or, you know, everywhere up here. That is a big problem, and I've been working tirelessly on that. I meet young folks all the time that are struggling. I'm not saying it's gonna be the fix-all for everything, but currently, right now, we are a soft, soft target for heroin in this area because of the fact that people are not getting off of it. They're coming out of treatment, getting sent home, hanging out with the same people that they normally used to hanging out with, and you're back in treatment again, or just like a vicious cycle. What I came to talk to you a little bit about was putting together a proclamation for the upcoming show that you were speaking of, Hungry Heart, which was put together by Bess O'Brien, St. Albans area, and it's Kingdom...
Kingdom County Productions.
Kingdom County Productions. Middlebury's already put one together for us. Your showing is gonna be on the 15th, and then we have one in Bristol, over at the Holly Hall, which I'll be doing, asking the same thing. And Middlebury's is at the, Middlebury, no, it's the Unitarian, Union of the Orchestral Society, right there down off, off Cross Street. So, if you don't mind, and I just wanted to introduce myself also, I would love to give a proclamation set up. Kingdom County Productions. Uh, Middlebury's already put one together for us. Your uh showing is gonna be on the fifteenth, and then we have one in Bristol, over at the Holly Hall, which I'll be doing, asking the same thing. And Middlebury's is at the uh, Middlebury, no, it's the Unitarian, uh Union of the Orchestral Society, right there down uh off Cross Street. So if you don't mind, and I just wanted to introduce myself also, uh uh I would love to give them a proclamation uh set up so I can advertise it that it's gonna be, it'll be Recovery Day for Regent's. And uh the tickets will be sold at the door, they're twelve dollars each. And I, you know, I would really push for you to see this, it's it's quite a, it's quite a documentary. And uh also, I'd love, love to see y'all support the Turning Point Center and the recovery efforts that we, we handle there. Uh, we see a lot of people come through there, and uh we're all peers. There's no clinical people there working, it's just peer-to-peer recovery. But thank you for your time.
Great. Well, thank you, Bill. Bill for, um, gave me a copy of the proclamation that that Middlebury has approved. I'll pass it around, it's it's um quite short, and I certainly think it'd be something that, you know, we would certainly wanna do, so just pass that around. And Joan is teaching me the intricacies of proclamation-making. Um, so I will be in touch with you, I've got your number. I'll, you know, get that taken care of and let you know it's been done and get it to you, and look forward to seeing you on the fifteenth. Okay? Good. Okay, um, we have one other guest, and we may, why don't we just move on to that, so people can uh do as they please. We have under Business 5B compensation involving discontinuance of extension of Victory Street. DDA is here, he was here a couple of weeks ago. Um, we talked about that road right-of-way or piece of road that bisects most of his land and his house. I think the consensus was that um it was probably not something that would benefit the city in the future, given the the physical constraints and so on. Um, and we, we talked about moving ahead potentially to look at um other things like costs and legal expenses and so on and so forth. Um, Mel and I have done some research. Um, from our end, um, I talked to DDA and said, you know, "You must have some idea what you think it might be worth to you." Um, it's probably not worth fifty thousand dollars to him, and it's, you know, and he realizes that we're probably not gonna just, you know, sign it over to him. So um I think we wanted to have a, some kind of discussion to see if we're in the same ballpark in terms of what this might be worth, and then we can talk about the details in terms of, you know, legal documents required and so on.
Yeah, I did a little more research, Bill, and and actually located uh three documents within our either land record or record, record books, making reference to Victory Street or the extension of Victory Street. I've never run into anything that says anything about Ferry Street, so I don't know how that ever got in there. But, but anyway, the point is, it's, it's crystal clear to me that this is not a piece of land. This is a, this is a part of a highway.
Okay.
And and therefore, it would be that statue, that would be the applicable statue from a process standpoint.
Okay. Um, so DDA, I mean, I I guess, you know, you brought this to us a couple of weeks ago. Do you have any, you know, in your mind, what do you think um might be a reasonable number? Um, and I think that we can, you know, then we can talk, Mel and I can tell the board what what we've been coming with, and if we can work this out, then we can at least, you know, know what direction to go.
Let me, let me just, uh, at the last meeting, we talked a little bit about, you know, has this come up before precedent? And the closest thing that we've ever dealt with, in my mind, deals with the Kanzior property. Uh, the Kanzior had a house that was a portion that was located within the Megg Road right-of-way, and as they were trying to settle that estate, they requested the city council consider, in that instance, an altering of that right-of-way. And the arrangement that we had with the administrator of the estate is that they would pay any legal fees, so any of the city's legal fees associated with that process. They also would pay any surveying costs. In this instance, there would be none because the property's already been surveyed. And thirdly, there was some compensation uh that was also paid to the city. Uh, one of the things that uh since this does involve the discontinuance of a highway, it's a legal process, and therefore, uh other interested parties uh are notified of this. And and uh this is not a park, this is a pu- you know, don't confuse this with, you know, we could turn this into a, into a park. This is a, this is a street. Uh, but someone could try to come up with an, with uh an argument that the city council should not discontinue this highway. And so those legal expenses to get to that point are are spent, and it's not, and it's not discontinued. So I just wanna let everyone know, particularly you, Didier, that that it's a, it's a process, that that a interested party can appeal in the court system. You know, what's the likelihood, who knows? But it's not a guarantee that, it's not a guarantee that if this process is initiated, it comes to you, a, an absolute predictable uh result.
Ready?
Well, I I wasn't at the last meeting, so how, how much of the, that um roadway area is needed for what he would like to do? Does it take up the whole, I mean, you know, it cuts right through, and and I think there's, you've got driveway and parking space on it now, right?
I wonder if I have one.
And, and then you wanted to um build a garage or something, right?
Right.
Does it take up the whole space with?
Um, it's, I mean, it's almost a, a different issue. Um, if um the garage would still be on on the other parcel on the south side of the driveway.
Okay.
Um, assuming that we can figure out a, you know, proper site for it.
DDA has about two point eight acres, and this is point two eight acres, which is bisects both parcels. His house is on about a quarter of an acre. The city, this road is point two eight, and there's two acres, which goes south, which is probably in a flood plain. There you go, good job. So it it really does, you know, kind of render his property useless.
And keep in mind, the larger, the so-called parcel two, identified as parcel two ring, this is two point five, five acres.
Yep, yep.
Eighty percent of that is within the flood plain.
Yeah, yes. So we, you know, we were debating if that was something that might be developable, and I don't believe it can because it floods every year.
So if this is a road, but this doesn't, if we, we don't have to bring this to the people, to the voters or anything?
No, no, no.
But an interested party could come in and sabotage it or.
Conceivably.
I mean, the only reason I'm asking the question is because, what, you know, what are the options? I mean, if if there's some difficulty that comes up with it, is there a way that that there is kind of almost like perpetual use of it, even though we still technically own it? Um, and uh that's, that's the only reason I was asking that question.
Um, so DDA, I mean, what, what, what do you think? How would you like to proceed, or what do you think in terms of, I mean, there's obviously some risk here, hopefully it's not a lot. Um, but then, you know, there is no guarantee.
Would this uh be the equivalent of a building permit where neighbors have two weeks to appeal a permit, or is that a different concept, I mean, situation?
It's a, there is a uh public notice, and uh in essence, the city council would hold a public hearing. And uh interested, there's budding property owners. I mean, in this instance here, it's very possible that there, that there are no abutters, but that's not to say that some.
Cause you're, there would be a butter.
But there's a notice that goes in the newspaper, I believe, and someone could, you know, somebody who lives on Victory Street, conceivably, could come to this uh meeting and and try to make a case that their property has been damaged as a result of this discontinuance. That's what it comes down to.
And who would make that decision? We would?
City council would, yeah.
And then if they wanted to go through, they'd have to report.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
Um, I mean, if that's, you know, that's an acceptable process to me. Um, as far as the conversation, I mean, I, I didn't do a less, uh you know, professional survey of the property.
You should have hired an appraiser, DDA.
Yeah, I don't know anyone. Uh, I, you know, I mean, I thought, you know, if we were within the the fif- the ten to fifteen thousand per acre, you know, that would bring us to, you know, I assume be, I mean, it's not a building site, so I'm assuming that that value could be probably fair for for a boundary adjustment. Um, so that would be, you know, between, I don't know, three and five or six, or.
So, nobody could, can anyone out of the clear blue come over and say, I mean, this is just hypothetical, and say, you know, "I didn't know that that was there, but I'd like to use that to get to the river." That wouldn't be any grounds for to stop anything, would it?
Uh, could it be grounds?
You know, like, somebody saying, "I like to use this now that I know it's here." Most, most, everyone probably doesn't know it's there. And now that I know there's a right-of-way here, I'd like to use this to go, well, I like that, like Mrs. Pat- uh Patton used to do it, to go fishing there, you know?
Right.
More people. Yeah, just access to it. You put that in the paper, you might, you might get a lot of response like that. I'm just.
But there is, there is access down at, down at the falls, above the falls.
A lot of people don't want even using, having their kids using the falls.
Close.
Near, close near the falls, cause it's dangerous.
And there are some other areas on South Maple Street.
I mean, I'm just asking if, if people came forward like that.
It, it is, it obviously is a little weird when you look at this map, you know, because you, you, it looks like you would like drive a car across the frozen uh Otter Creek. I mean, that's what it, what it looks like, because it looks like.
Yeah.
Horse drawn sleaze over the frozen creek.
That would go across. I mean, it's, it's not, it's a highway, it's not a piece of land, it's not a public park. You know, we don't, I don't, I'm sure that, you know, I, I know that it's not even on our, it's not even on our mileage uh sheet, but it could be as a class four road, and you know.
It's a class four road.
I'm sure that it is, it's a class four road. You know, I mean, you know, we don't have an ordinance that says you can park there or says that you, you can't park there. Uh, but I would think that if uh, you know, if that road was being used as a park, you know, I think that Didier would come to the city council and say, "You know, I understand I have a road here, but I don't, I'm not supposed to have a park, I have a road," and, you know.
Kinda goes both ways, yeah.
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 You know, so like conceivably, maybe, you know, as far as, what does somebody have rights to do? I think that probably, I could be wrong, but I think that if if I had a canoe, I could drive right across Didier's lawn, get out of my car, take my canoe off, go park somewhere else.
Right.
Walk back over there, do my canoeing, and and I, I think that that's what, the public has a right to do that.
That's what I'm asking.
Okay? And I don't know if that's, you know, you know, fishing, I don't know, I don't know what, that, that.
Well, anything to get access there.
You know.
Yeah. Well, I just think, you know, given, given the circumstances and the survey and so on, I, you know, I just feel like it's, it would be nice to clean it up.
Yeah, I would hope common sense here.
Uh, yeah, that's kind of my attitude, I guess, but.
I mean, you know, it's, it's in his front yard. I mean, and nobody uses it. So.
But that's because they don't know about it. But if you put it in the paper, you'd be surprised what will happen.
But that's, you know, hopefully that's our position, is that we use common sense and.
I mean, it's all, it's all kinds of.
That's because you didn't know about it, but if they had known about it, they'd never have used it.
There's all kinds of speculation about what, what, what were the people in eighteen fifty-three thinking about, all right? And it might have been, it might have been so obvious to them that what it is, is back then, you didn't have electricity, and you walked down there and you cut a chunk of ice out of it, and you dragged it back home, okay? That's, so when we think about a highway, you know, today, we think about vehicles or whatever. In eighteen fifty-three, that's not what you're thinking about, you know?
Thinking about ice.
I was just saying, there was a fridge there at one time.
And so, I, you know, I think that in this instance,
Not what I know of.
there, there was a time when this made perfect sense. It had to have, you know, our, our forefathers wouldn't have done it otherwise. In this day and age.
It's not.
You know.
Doesn't make sense.
Yeah, doesn't make any sense.
You know, Ferry Street might be an idea that maybe a ferry, you know, brought
Might have a little crossing over the river.
goods into town or something, but it, it, in this day and age, this doesn't make any sense. It doesn't.
Right.
So, so DDA, you were saying, you know, ten or fifteen thousand dollars an acre. So if we're looking at about a, between a quarter and a third of an acre, you're looking at what, three thousand dollars, four thousand dollars?
So, you know, and I didn't get a chance to get to what Matt, uh, Bill, but I would think that, you know, and I should get in touch with him, I think that the legal fees associated this should not be more than two thousand dollars. Now, I, I shouldn't be telling Jim or Matt what he, what the most he should be charged or something, but it is.
Only left under a thousand.
I mean, one of the things is, you know, the city has been through this before, so it's just a matter of, of pulling out those documents, those notices, you know, what needs to be done. And I, and I, when I say two thousand dollars, and I know there needs to be a hearing, and then there needs to be something that need, that is prepared and recorded in the land records, that it's been discontinued. One of the things that makes this a little simple is typically, when a road is discontinued, there's two things that happens. One is they try to find out what landowner did they take it from in the beginning, because it goes back to them. However, if you can't determine that, it's assumed that it came half from the person on the right and half from the person on the left. In this instance, this is easy. You own both sides, all right? So when they discontinue, the rights are are gonna go to you, and no one, and no one else.
It's easy, okay.
But so, so that's why I'm saying, I, you know, I, I don't think that I'm off by this two thousand, two thousand dollars. So to me, I mean, sure, you could, you know, is this something the city, the city should be cleaning up? Well, maybe it should be, but, you know, in the past, you know, property owners have fun, have paid for that legal fees and not taxpayers in these instances.
So that, whatever legal fees is what we're saying is what we want from it. That's it?
Well, DDA would pay that, and he's, you know, pay us to to reclaim that so that he gets, you know, clean title to that.
Right.
And, you know, Mel looked at some, some assessment numbers. I, I keep track of sales like this as part of my business. Um, and I, there aren't a lot of them, obviously, but, you know, there are a handful that are a quarter acre, third acre, and, you know, he's in the ballpark. I mean, anywhere from three, four, five thousand dollars is like, kind of like the circle of values, so, uh, you know, it sounds like there's probably, you know, we can probably make it work. What that, what he's saying is, seems to be in the ballpark, in terms of what the city should get in compensation for it. But I guess the next process would be, do we, do we go forward to the next step, do a warning or a hearing? If that, if that's clean and nobody objects, then we enter into an agreement to have the legal work done and a contract for the, for the transaction. Is that the way to do it?
I mean, you could do that. I, I don't know that it needs to be that formal. I mean, I think that if, if Didier was to, if, if the city council was agreeable to move forward, if Di- if Didier gave us two checks, all right, one check for two thousand dollars, or gave us two checks, one check for two thousand, another check for twenty-five hundred, or whatever the other check wants to be. The two thousand is like, is to cover the legal expenses, all right? If the legal expenses are sixteen hundred, we give them four hundred back. The twenty-five hundred, we keep upon the filing of the final documents. So we have both of those checks. Neither of them get cashed.
Until, until it's all settled.
Until we've settled it. Right. I mean, to me, you know, I don't, you know, I mean, I don't know that it needs to be any more complicated than that.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, I'd like to just comment, and DDA is not probably gonna like this, but um
It's okay.
I have to say, you know, uh, that I think that the land value is better, is more than twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, first of all, it makes his parcel complete, and there's value to that. And it also, um, when we go down, we buy a piece of flooded land down on Otter Creek because it's available and we need it to, we paid ten thousand for that.
Twenty, really, we've only paid ten for half.
Right, but I mean, it was up to, up to parts. So I'm not sure that that's a number that I think is a fair number to the city. I think in the end, he gets his complete lot. I don't think the legal fee, fee, uh, fees would be probably a thousand dollars. I can't imagine it would be anything more than that. But I think that we have to really, you know, everybody benefits from this. You know, there's, as long as there's a fair price paid for the land. And I'm not sure that twenty-five hundred dollars to bring his land together is a fair price, from a real estate point of view.
Yeah, I mean, the circumstances certainly are not, they're not the same as, you know, you're buying a sliver of land next door.
Exactly.
Protection, it does add some value for the future.
And it's going to clear up a title that DDA. Right, and it's going to clear up a title that DDA was willing to purchase at the time, and we knew the road was there. Um, and it was an issue, it was, it was, he, he had difficulty getting title insurance at the time. Um, but at the same time, it's gonna make a better parcel for him, and make his property more valuable to, to a point where, at some point when he tries to sell that, or wants to sell that, um, there, there's no title and, um, problem at that issue. So twenty-five hundred dollars, forgetting the legal fees, but I think it's, it's more valuable than twenty-five hundred dollars.
How wide is that?
So, I think it's fifty-six or sixty-six, Joan, can you hear the rain?
Just look at the width of that lot.
I think it's, I think what the, what I ran across was, was that it was a four rod Y, but I don't, let me just see it showing up. Uh, it indicates your fifty, fifty-six point, uh, one six.
It looks like. Yeah.
And so what would that, how many feet total would we, he own?
And that is two hundred and.
What's that?
How many total feet on the river would there be after that?
Would he own?
Yeah. But a lot of it is wet land, yeah, but not too much wet land.
Or two fifty?
Two fifty.
Yeah. So, usable, usable maybe a hundred and twenty.
Roughly two fifty.
Okay, well, I sold the house down there, had a hundred and twenty feet of river frontage, and it was that big house, it was Jen's, and that went for two oh three.
The, I calculate, I calculated the size of this, if we were looking at it as a parcel, the size of this parcel is point two four nine acres, so it's a quarter of an acre. Didier's, Didier's house is sitting on a lot of point two eight. The, the Ferry Street here, just measuring it as a piece of land, is point two five.
So that's.
And, uh, and then Didier also owns this other two point five five acres. Uh, but, I think your, your point's well taken, is, is, it really, it, it's a constraint on the property, clearly a constraint on the property.
Yeah, I think it's just, I think we need to be fair to him, but at the same time, we need to be fair to the city, and I don't, my personal opinion is that twenty-five hundred dollars for that parcel is not enough.
Do, do you have a, a?
Well, I think there's a compromise, that, you know, I thought, my per, when I came here, thinking tonight that we'd do it, I was thinking eight thousand, but.
To- total, or, or on top of the legal fees?
Well, you know, I, I, I don't know what the legal fees, but I really don't think they're gonna be more than a thousand, so even if it's eight, and you, and you got seven, it's better than twenty-eight, or twenty-five. Um, but, you know, it's not a building lot, so, you know, putting building lot things aside, we're building houses on quarter of an acres at, you know, seventy thousand, so. I know it's not a building lot, but you need to, you need to be fair.
Well, how about? How about if we look at, at legal fees, and, I mean, I mean, I think we wanna try and make this work, and it's, it would be nice to, to be able to, you know, have everybody feel like they were treated fairly, but, you know, what if we looked at legal fees and, you know, five thousand?
I would feel better about that.
You know, then you're looking at maybe a total of six or seven to clear his title.
Right.
Um, I'm just trying to look at something in the middle that might appease, you know, you, and, and maybe the other members.
Nobody has to appease me, I just want.
Well, no, but I've, that, that we all think is gonna be a fair number, I mean, it's, I guess what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah.
What do you think, Ziggy? I mean, you, you've been in real estate for most of your life.
Yeah, I have, oh, I was just thinking on the one that sold down the road, you know, a hundred and twenty, and it had three hundred feet depth. You know, of course, they were closer to the street, and that's, that's a good sized lot on the river.
Yeah.
Um.
I mean, what is that at a value, you know, um?
I don't know, probably, uh, four or five thousand, but I wouldn't go any higher than that.
Okay, so you're four or five, you guys have any input, any, any, any sense as to what you think would be a fair number?
I would be comfortable with the five thousand, depending on the fees.
Okay, so we've got a four and a five, we've got a five, and a four and a five, Lynn, we've got a five.
Who'll give a dollar, you gotta start it.
DDA, I mean, how do you feel, would, would you, would you agree to five thousand, and then the legal fees, which hopefully would be, you know, not a huge amount of money? And that would, that would, you know, basically make your property whole, give the city, you know, some compensation for the, you know, for, for that? If, if that, would five thousand work for everybody, if, if DDA says that that seems to be fair?
Yeah, fine, concept of value.
Okay.
My, my question, I guess, to, to avoid prolonging this conversation, but, it's just, to me, it just comes down to, what, what would somebody pay for that lot, two separate lots, versus what would somebody pay for the complete lot?
Yeah.
The difference between those two is the value of that piece of land.
Yeah.
I don't know what that is, but.
A three acre, roughly a three acre lot.
Yeah, but whatever, it's a what, like?
Yeah, but that's, that's one of the, you know, the issues, it, it's not, it's not a, a, a real straight, um, situation there in terms of valuation.
My, my, my opinion of what something is worth is what somebody's willing to sell it for, and what somebody's willing to buy it for.
That's right.
That becomes the value.
Well, that's what, I'm saying, basically saying the same thing.
So, right.
What would you pay, if somebody's buying it, what would you pay for those two lots with the thing in the middle, versus what would you pay for the complete lot?
Right.
I gue- I'm happy with five thousand. I'm happy with three thousand.
So is that, so, do we have a consensus here?
We do.
Sure. Do we need a motion?
I didn't, I.
You weren't here last week, so.
I don't know, but I mean, originally, until Lynn talked about making the whole parcel, I hadn't really conceived of it that way, and I, I thought it was worth practically nothing, actually. Um, and, so I've changed my mind on that, that it probably should, we should get a little bit more, because it does make a, I didn't know until tonight that it split the lot, you know, and so, it, it does make a, a, a much bigger difference to that parcel than I originally envisioned. So probably, going a little bit further up in the price is, makes sense.
Would this require a motion, Mel?
I, I think that what you, you know, um, I think that it should require a motion that upon receipt of two checks from Didier, uh, one for, one for two thousand, and if it's, that's okay, Lynn, if it's a thousand, we'll give him his money back, we won't, we're making money off him, but give us, give us two che, upon receipt of two checks, we will have this, you know, have this, direct me to have the city attorney proceed with, with discontinuing that stretch.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion made.
Second.
Any further discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, thank you, does that work for you? Great, you can talk to Mel about that and.
Just drop the check up, Joan is just gonna sit on the check, right, Joan, we're not gonna do it, we're just gonna sit on, sit on.
Okay.
Maybe they'll hatch.
Okay, uh, let's go back to approval of minutes of October eighth, two thousand thirteen, uh.
I make said motion, Mel second.
Randy and Lowell, anyone have any comments or corrections on that, I didn't see any? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, okay. Um, we'll move down to five A, special city meeting for referendum, Mel, you wanna bring us up to date on that?
Sure, uh, Jeff Margolis, after the last meeting, Jeff met with Joan and I, uh, to read the law, and, and, uh, jointly develop a so-called neutral question, and I, I could have brought it to you, it says something to the effect, you know, shall the voters approve the city council's support of, uh, you know, to, to support to Vermont, to the Vermont Public Service Board of Vermont Gas's proposed extension of, of, of gas this area? It was, it's something like, it actually came right out of the last, it was, it came right out of the last paragraph of the December letter, because that's what the city council did. So it's, it's, it was, it's clear that in this instance, yes means, uh, gas to Virgens, no means, no gas to Virgens, okay? So that's that. That petition has been circulated, and, um, one of the things, for town meeting day, petitions for, for articles, those go to Joan as the clerk, I mean, there's a law, a specific law about articles for town meeting, um, that have to arrive to the clerk within, with not more than forty days before a town meeting, and the city council has to sign the annual city warning, not less than thirty, thirty days before. Relative to special meetings, the petitions or applications, they don't go to Joan, they go to the, they go directly to the city council, all right? And once the city council receives one, it drives a very specific schedule. Once the city council receives it, within fifteen days, the city council has to meet and sign the warning for a special vote. And when they sign that warning, that warning cannot be more than forty days, nor less than thirty days before that vote, okay? So you have this up to fifteen day calendar that looks like this, and then you have this thirty to forty day calendar. Point being is, is that it is not absolutely certain today when the high school, um, vote, bond vote is going to occur. They have a meeting coming up on Monday, and it's my understanding that there is a warning that has been drafted calling for a December third vote, but the, but the board of directors have not made that decision, nor directed staff to craft that, uh, warning. So, I mean, it's possible that on, that on Monday, if there's, there's possible that a majority of that board may not vote until March, they may indeed vote, they, they may say yes December third, they may say December ten, they may say December seventeenth. And the problem is, some of those dates don't fall into this calendar, so, uh, I sent Jeff an email today, because I think that Jeff, Jeff agrees, and the city council agrees, and if there's gonna be a vote, let's have it all in the same day, all right?
Yes.
And so because, because that hasn't been set yet, uh, we wanna make it a little bit clearer, we wanna know what's going on, and so, it's best that Jeff not file that tonight, because it, because now you're blocked, now you're boxed into that calendar. Yet, hold on to it, have the city council hold a special meeting a week from today, uh, anticipating the receipt of that petition. And, and, because I can tell you that if, if for whatever reason the high school decides to not vote until March, Jeff's gonna, you know, Jeff wants to have a public vote, okay? And so, we, uh, hopefully, I guess, the, we need to have a special meeting a week from today, provided we know that there's a quorum at a, uh.
Yeah, so put that on your calendar, and we'll do it at city hall.
Yeah.
We don't need to set up everything here.
No.
It'll be a ten minute meeting, just to accept the petition and, and start that process.
So that is, that's, it's that lockstep, so it's, it's not going to the next, uh, election or any, anytime it.
No, not a petition, no, not a petition.
Once the petition is filed, that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So does that work into the December third date?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, once we know that's official, then that all, that we can do it on the same day.
By next, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, plan on that, and, and if that doesn't happen, then he can bring it in whenever, and we've just gotta deal with it.
And what we would do is that, if, let's say the high school meets on Monday, um, we, we, we gotta, we know that we're gonna be pairing a warning anyway, Joan, so, I mean, if we, we just don't know what the dates are, so we can start that tomorrow, uh, so anyway, this special meeting, what I, what I envision is, is that a week from tonight, we will absolutely know what the high school does, and we will, we will have a warning for you to sign that night, so you don't have to come back again, uh, to sign a warning, we'll have it all prepared for you.
Great.
That's at six o'clock?
Yeah.
Whatever works for folks.
Yeah, I mean, we don't need to, or earlier if people want to, I mean, I know you're, you're all busy, so, six is fine with me, just we'll do it and, and get it over with, and it shouldn't take long. Okay, great, thanks, Mel, that's, that's always confused me, that whole date thing, you're good at that, you and Joan know that. Uh, moving on, comprehensive city ordinance review priorities, we, we talked about this briefly last week, um, any of you that, that were interested or have volunteered, I hope that you, if you haven't gotten the ordinances, get them online or from Joan to get them. I think what we might try and do is maybe try and do one every meeting to at least discuss amongst us for five or ten minutes, and try and kind of, you know, get to some kind of an agreement, and then we can, you know, draft that in ordinance, so, Mel, uh, ready?
Um, it just seems like there should be some kind of preliminary work, I, I don't, I don't think it's going to be obvious to most council members, um, how to look at an ordinance, and what might be wrong with it, and, and what to add to it.
Yeah, well, we talked about it last week, um, in more detail, and we, some of the ordinances are fine, we've determined. There, there's a, there's a traffic and parking ordinance that is a mess, and, and Mel's willing to work on that with Shannon and the chief, uh, myself. Joe and I have agreed to work on the parks and recreation one, um.
See, I think, I think what we, what we.
So we have like three or four that, that I think we need to kind of focus on.
No, I, I understand that, it just seems like somebody who has more knowledge, uh, or, or, uh, of ordinances, particularly of that type, or that we gather information, like templates of other, um, ordinances of similar type to look at, because, um, just, uh, just cold, I'm not sure that city council members are gonna recognize the, the legal, uh, portions of, of what an ordinance needs, um, what is it missing, uh, all of those things.
I like the idea of getting some templates, and reading them, and deciding what we need and what we don't need.
I mean, you gotta compare, you gotta compare it against something.
Yep, okay.
Um, and, in, in order to be able to do it, I think.
Yep, yeah, I think that's a good idea, I mean, that's, I mean, I know that, I've got notes here, motor vehicle and traffic, um, police department, Mel and Lynn, I think you off, you offered to help with that one.
I was doing licenses with Joe.
Oh, you are, okay.
That's what I had.
Yep, I had to down for it.
Okay, then I had you by the wrong one, all right.
What do I do, assign to?
You haven't yet.
No, three of them.
What? Joe and Bill were on street sidewalks and parks, uh.
Oh, you did, lay out public improvements, Mel, Rennie, and Lynn.
Yep, there you go.
Yeah, I think what we need is, uh, you know, one of the things, uh.
We might even wanna do.
What we need to do is create a little spreadsheet that has ordinances one through fourteen, because some of them are fine, and we should, we should save, just get a little box so that, let's say that licenses and permits is number three, you know, we need to, we just need to need a chart here that says, that's Joan, Lynn, and such and such, and build this chart. And, and, you're right, Rennie, some of these, there's already templates at BLCT, and, and we just gather, gather them all up, you know, really, just gather up the templates, uh, because they're all available online.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
And get it to tho, get it to those subcommittees, uh.
So let's try and do that, you know.
We, we don't meet again until November nineteenth or whatever.
It says on the, there's a meeting on the twelfth on the schedule.
Yeah, I think that's wrong, gotta be wrong, I think it's the nineteenth.
Is it, okay.
Yeah.
Well, if you had them ready for next Tuesday, we could just pick them up then.
We could.
That's true too, if that's a possibility, yeah.
Slim, but it's a possibility.
You know, I mean, it's, it's not pressing, but it's something that we'd like to try and get done over the winter, to, is to try and get those at least up to date and, and make some sense, because some of them, some of them really do need, uh, all right, so, we'll, we'll talk about it, I can, I can print some off, and highlight some areas that we might need to put in, and take a peek at those, okay?
That's, yeah, November nineteenth, not the twelfth, the twelfth is actually too early.
Well, so you have November night, uh, twelfth and twenty-sixth.
On, on this, and twenty-sixth must be what, two days before Thanksgiving, is that right?
Gotta be.
Yeah.
So, I don't ca, I don't, I don't care.
Is the nineteenth preferable, one meeting?
Yeah, I don't think.
Okay, so let's do the nineteenth.
And we only have one meeting in December two, correct?
On the seventeenth.
No, in December two.
Yeah, the seventeen.
Seventeenth to December.
On the seventeenth.
Yeah. And then two in January, two in February.
Okay.
Okay, so November nineteenth, six P M. here, and a special meeting next week. Um, so that takes care of business, um, managers report, Mel, you wanna update us on budget and police and solar?
Sure, I, I, relative to budget, uh, let me just tell you, I've spent my time on the revenue page, and I just wanna let you know that I have some concerns about revenue page at this point, where, uh, where, one, not that this is good news, but there, the, I think on your budget, there's a, one new line item that I've added, where the third line down that says late homestead penalties. Anybody who does not file their homestead declaration in time, or is hit with a, is a hit with a penalty, and that's nothing new. But the, uh, those penalties in the past have just rolled into property taxes, and, and it's substantial enough for me, and it's not property taxes, it's a very specific revenue, it's a homestead, it's a late homestead penalty, and so, uh, that number actually will end up be, being a little bigger in another week or so, right, Joan, because we're gonna get one more, one more download, so anyway, that's, that's, I don't wanna say it's new money, but, but anyway, that's that part. Relative to the other revenues, you know, for instance. Relative to the other revenues, you know, for instance, interest earnings, we budgeted twenty thousand dollars, we're at five oh one fifty-three. Our interest earnings, I mean, we have money invested in CDs, uh, the general fund are all CDs, Joan and I believe. The general operating, no municipal bonds in there, in general operating, they're all CDs. But CDs carry a market value and our auditors are, require us to use market value. And so that, this is, this, even though these CDs, we get checks that come in, it's market value is what's used to calculate that. And so, uh, we hope that this will correct itself, but it's concerning, obviously, that, uh, uh, that we don't appear like we're making any money on, on our three or four hundred thousand dollars or something like that, right Joan? I, what the, what the numbers, the big number, three or four hundred thousand. So, it's, so it's, it's all invested. It's not, it's not like we got money sitting idle. It's invested, but it's the market value of those instruments that when we get our reports, you know, they continue to either drop in value.
Well, if rates go up, the value, the face value will go down.
Correct, right. So, so anyway, I just wanna remark about that. Uh, police fines, uh, it does appear to be down, but keep in mind that the check that we received in July was really June's money. So that got taken out, so even though it says sixteen point eight four percent, uh, it's not against four checks, but it is against three. So it is, it is short, uh, at this point.
Does that include the recent check, the month and road?
Not till we get paid, not till we get paid.
Okay.
Uh, the other thing I, I just wanna remark about, uh, cause it's just sitting there and we might just well talk about it now is never. And that deals with lighting of the falls. The next, on my copy, the next to the last line item, you know, we spent about two thousand dollars, two thousand eighty-four dollars or something on lighting the falls in the hope, if you will, cause Mike, Mike Daniels, uh, put a letter out to businesses in hopes of getting support. And there was only three checks that came in totaling one seventy-five. So I just wanna let everybody know that, that at some point, that needs to be dealt with, okay? Cause it just can't sit there, we can't charge two thousand dollars to a non-budget expense unless there is two thousand dollars of non-budget revenue to absolutely offset that. So that's just sitting there as a, as a problem. So, so anyway, I'm just gonna leave it at that, Bill. I, I, you know, Joan just did sewer billing, sewer, on the revenue side, sewer billing is fine. Contracts have all been sent out for fire and, and, uh, and recycling, those, those monies are rolling in. But, uh, at this point, here we are in October, and I'm, I am a little concerned with, with the revenue page. And if that continues to hold, then, then we may have to, um, not spend on something. I mean, if, if the revenues aren't there, they aren't there. It's that, it's that simple. And we, uh, we would have to hold back on some expenses, you know, at some point, uh, down the road here in this fiscal year.
Okay. Any questions? Police station?
Police station, I don't have a written budget report for you, but, uh, as I mentioned last time, uh, and I do not have the quote yet because of the code thing on the armory, because of the extra, better fire rating, if you will, for the armory and for the evidence room, I just don't have that, that, actually, that number.
Is that the suspended block that I see now?
No, no, it actually, what it deal, what it deals with is in the, the armory where guns, bullets, all that type of stuff. A typical suspended ceiling is by code, you can't have a, right, just a regular suspended ceiling in there. And you can't have a suspended, suspended ceiling in your evidence room because of what may be in that evidence, in that evidence room. That has to have a five eight sheet rock rated ceiling.
Fire rated.
Fire rated, so, and I, so I just don't have those numbers, so that's that one.
Single layer or double layer?
Uh, I, I don't know, Randy, I don't know. I just, you know, I don't know if it's a one hour or two, yeah, two hour. If it's, obviously, if it's two, it's, it's double, alright? If it's one, it's five eights, but I don't have the, I don't have the cost on that. Uh, relative to the surge tank, I met with the water district today, uh, I haven't got this thing settled yet. And, and, uh, I don't know what's gonna hap, I don't know what we're gonna do yet, but, you know, there was two one inch copper lines. Everybody agrees that that's the case, but we don't know, cause that's what shows up on the underpass project in the, in the mid eighties. Uh, you know, and, and it's not like the water district is saying, you know, anything really. Uh, but anyway, we're, we're faced, we're faced with either spending forty-four hundred dollars or spending eleven thousand dollars to get a two inch line over to their line. There was another, there's another fire hydrant that's located behind Dan Flaster's building. We, they didn't know whether or not it's alive or not, and it, and if it's not, well, that's, there's a hydrant sitting out in a field with, with, you open it up, it'd be dust come out of it, so it's possible that it's, that that's not an option.
No.
If it is an option, then, then that might be a different way to bring a two inch line to the police station. So, so really, worst case scenario, worst case scenario, uh, is that we need to get a two inch line from the ten inch main that stops out in front of, about country own products and bring that to our building. That's worst ca, that's the worst case scenario.
That's the eleven thousand dollar option?
Eleven thousand dollar option. Another, you know, the other option is, is, is to just run it across the road to a two inch. That's gonna be something less than eleven thousand. The other option is this forty-four hundred dollar surge tank. And the other option, if it's an option, deals with this other line that's located behind Dan Flasher's that may or may not be a live line or not. It, we just don't know. So, I, uh, I just wanna let you know about that.
Yep.
Uh, we went through very carefully about outlets and data connections. Oh, we've done that a couple times and again today, we've actually eliminated some outlets, which were crystal clear that we would, they would never see a plug ever, not ever, never, alright? So get those out of there. Uh, data, uh, on the other hand, you know, we, we added some data, you know, because, you know, that's kind of the life that we're in. You know, that you're, we're all laptops and, and, you know, if it's a fingerprint machine, it's gotta be data. And if it's this, it's gotta have data. So we added a few data receptacles to the line, so I think I eliminated eleven outlets and added three data ports. Obviously, there's a cost to that, and they actually make them just rebid, re-quote, and I don't know if it'll be the same. But I don't have any, you know, uh, you know, that, one of the things I asked them, I said, listen, when we started out in this project, you know, we had this fifty thousand dollar contingency and then we have another thirty-seven thousand dollars over here, and we know that some of our legal fees are up and there's certain expenses that we know about, the land purchase that needs to occur here soon. And we're gonna bite into this eighty-seven. And so I specifically said, is there, are we out of the surprise mode? Are we, you know, where are we? Are we out of, are we okay now, you know? And everybody from Bread Loaf says, you're out of the ground, and that's key. The surprises typically happen in the ground. You run into that boulder, alright? And that's a twenty thousand dollar thing, so.
Maybe that water line is like probably the only surprise, let's hope.
The other thing, like I'll give you an example, one of the things when they were giving our budget, they had not really confirmed the framing quote, okay? And so that's why on our, on our budget, it says Bread Loaf Construction. I knew Bread Loaf Construction wasn't gonna be the ones doing the framing, but they needed to get me a number, alright? And so now Cornerstone is doing the framing, they did, um, their proposal did get accepted. That's who's doing the, doing the framing, and it's on budget, and that's fine, okay? So I said, okay, have you, is there any other contractors that you haven't really got yet? And therefore you really don't know what the price is? And they said, no, no, they think that everything is in place. So I'm really hoping, Bill, I don't have to come with my hand out. You know, but, you know, again, you know, it's, you know, we're finalizing the, you know, one of the things that's coming tomorrow morning is to make a final decision on security cameras. And I told George, I said, listen, I've got to have, I've got to have the, um, field of vision, alright, of a camera. I mean, I wanna know what is the field of vision and how far can you, can this thing see and maintain, um, quality as you blow that up, you know, so that you can get that person's face clearly on your screen. So we're gonna get that in the morning, and that will determine whether or not you do need to have a camera on both, both ends of the width of fifty-five feet or both ends of the eighty-one. So we're gonna clean that up, uh, tomorrow, put that part, uh, put that part to bed. So, you know, you know.
Good, good.
We're, we're okay.
Ziggy?
If that store goes in over there, Nails, where are they getting their water?
Across, the ten inches across the street.
So they're gonna hook onto the ten?
Well, I don't, maybe they already are, they're probably already hooked onto the ten.
Okay, I was just wondering.
The ten goes to Virgens Building Supply. It already goes up to that point.
Okay.
So, so, I'm sure, I'm sure it's tied into the.
Well, I didn't know if there was a line, a big line in the back, or they were gonna have to, they were gonna bring a huge one if there's a possibility that you both, we both could hook onto it. So I was just wondering.
No, no.
Because they're gonna need a lot of water over there.
Uh, I, I'm sure they are. I don't know, I don't, I have no idea what they, what they, but I, I just know that there's a ten inch across the road. Cause the old, the line got abandoned.
Well, that sounds good, so we're on budget. Solar project, any update there?
Yeah, they're rocking and rolling.
Are they? Nice.
Actually, Jim, uh, Jim is clearing out all of the scrap metal and some of Carol's, uh, collections down there.
Projects.
Get that out of the way. Uh, you know, I talked to Bruce Bushy, you know, uh, apparently they're supposed to be cutting a check to Green Mountain Power to cover the, the pole relocation, so we're, um, it's, it's, uh, it's moving forward as I see it here, alright? I have not received an assignment of a agreement to a different financier, but I really thought that I would see that, you know, a week or so ago. But it's, it's moving, uh, it's moving forward, okay?
Good, good. That's exciting.
Train station agreement, I actually have that on my computer. I, Jim sent me the, the word version of the, uh, Ferrisburg Shopping Center agreement. And so I started to work on it and I got distracted. So, uh, we'll get, we'll get something to you, uh, for the meeting in November. And I don't have any topics of interest, really.
And I don't either, really. Does anybody else have any items they'd like to bring up or discuss? Why don't we plan on the meeting a week from today? We'll send out an email if it's not on or call city hall that day to make sure. But let's plan on it at, at Mel's office, Tuesday at six, and if something changes, we'll get the word out. And if, worst case, we put a piece of paper in the door saying, no meeting.
Alright.
Joe?
Just wanted to let folks know that I met with the, uh, elementary school board last night to discuss the toddler park.
Yep.
And, um, you know, it was a very positive conversation. Their, their concerns revolve primarily around the appearance and maintenance of it, because it is sort of a, in front of the school. And again, the parking and parking plan. I heard from David Raphael today that he expected that we shouldn't need any more than six parking spaces. That's kinda where we're at with that. And we're still waiting on the, as far as I know, we're still waiting on the bond.
The grant.
Grant.
Grant, rather.
Twenty-five thousand, sorry. And that's supposed to be sometime early November?
Well, I mean, you know, it's coming out soon.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's hard.
Okay.
Cause I think when we talked at the last meeting was in two or three weeks, so it's been two.
Been two, yeah. Okay, uh, motion to adjourn?
I make the motion to adjourn.
Ziggy got that one.
Yeah. That's quick, square.
We'll give Randy the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We should take turns every time we have a meeting.